I understand. We can hear you right.
Now, I'm gonna put y'all on mute and you won't be able to hear me, but I'll be able to hear you. So.
Okay.
My Bluetooth not good in this car, and I can't usually drive it on the side of my ear, so.
We don't want to implicate you in any illegal activity.
I don't, I don't see any.
This is being recorded and it's on. Okay, I'll call the committee of orders, please. They're five to start our joint witnesses of flagging religions. Mr. Rookson, would you lead us? I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Start by a quick announcement of February the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, do you please have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Smith made a motion, Mr. Rookson seconded, had an all yes?
All yes.
All yes vote, okay. Okay, public comments, I don't think anyone signed in, did they?
No one signed in.
Okay, alright, so our first presentation tonight is Jeff McKip's, wanna talk to us about the two thousand fifteen sixteen school calendar.
Everything everyone know about the calendar? Afraid to ask. Huh?
Huh?
This is the final. No, this is the first public calendar meeting, that's what we're doing tonight. I've given you a folder. It actually has calendar information on both sides, but the calendar information on the left is later on in the agenda, and that pertains to this year's current calendar. And, and the conversation about making up for lost instruction. So what I'd like for you to look at right now is the information that's found on the right-hand side, in that pocket of the calendar, which I believe the first thing you're gonna see is the results of the voting that's occurred to this point. As well as, you'll see a copy of Calendar A, Calendar B, a checklist that we have utilized here at the local level to make sure that all the components of the calendar are in place before we send it on to the State Department for approval. And then those last three documents, so all the guidance goes along with the development of the calendar. So what I thought we could do to begin with is take a look at each one of the calendars. I'm gonna pull up, actually I have Calendar A up already. And if it's okay, would you want us to walk over and sit down so I can drive the calendar and point?
You can talk there, Jim, that'd be great.
Ah. Calendar committee met several weeks ago, and we actually looked at several different calendars. I believe we, we had six that we examined, and we carved those down to the two that you're gonna see tonight, which we've sent out for our employees to vote upon, their calendar of choice, their preference. This first calendar would bring employees back on August the twelfth. There would be two continuing ed days, the twelfth and thirteenth, with a preparation day on the fourteenth. Students' first day would be August seventeenth. We have a full week off for Thanksgiving break beginning on the twenty-third of November. Two full weeks for Christmas break. With the first semester ending make sure I got the right one here, on January the fifteenth. Shortly after the semester ends, we have a parent-teacher day, which was very successful this past year, so we decided to put it in the calendar once again. Gives the teachers an opportunity to speak with, talk to their parents, might have any concerns about their students' grades and work that they're doing. And then all the other requirements we have filled in, the guidelines are very restrictive in terms of what you do with the additional days. You can schedule the six OS days, those are outside school environment days, four of which have to occur after the one hundred and thirtieth day of the school year. So those six days, you'll see three of them occur before the end of school. That P-day on June the sixth would mark the last day for employees, for teachers. June the third being the last day for students. So if we didn't have any inclement weather next year, we would be able to lease everyone on June the sixth. If not, we would end up attending school at least up through June the ninth, then of course the potential to have school through June the thirtieth.
Just wait until after, we'll get an opportunity there in just a second.
Graduation on this calendar would take place on Friday, May the twenty-seventh. Graduation, that date's locked in, once it's established and approved by the State Department, by the Department of Education, regardless of whether or not we would have to extend the school year next year to make up for lost instruction, that date is locked in, so it doesn't improve. We're also required to include faculty senate dates, and I have those listed down at the bottom of the calendar. First faculty senate meeting will take place on August the fourteenth, which is that preparation day for teachers. And you have to schedule one at least every forty-five instructional days, no more than that, over the course of the remainder of the school year, so you see those dates. Of course, we have to ensure that there's a hundred and eighty days of instructions provided, and out here on the far right-hand side, for each one of the mods, you'll see how we divided that up into the number of instructional days, as well as non-instructional days, non-toll. So I'll pause right there to see if you've got any questions regarding this first calendar, Calendar A.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Did you, anybody wanna ask?
I was just gonna ask about bank time, what's your bank time?
We, our school would least about a bank time, it's Ranger Elementary. And that school this year banked almost eleven days, we don't bank nearly eleven days for approved instruction.
Okay, any further questions from anyone about Calendar A? Alright, Jim?
Calendar B we refer to as our late start calendar. Calendar would bring teachers back, or would bring employees back on August the nineteenth, which is very similar to the date, the time that we run employees back to work this year. Again, you'd have two continuing ed days to kick off the school year with a prep day on that Friday. Students' first day would be August the twenty-fourth. This calendar also includes a full week off for Thanksgiving, but a shortened Christmas break by two days. The first semester in this calendar ends on January the nineteenth. And again, just like we did in Calendar A, we have a parent-teacher day scheduled through the twenty-fifth of January. And then the OS days were included in there, just as it was in the previous calendar, four of which had to be after the one hundred and thirtieth day of school. We have a full week off for spring break, I'm able to mention that in the first calendar, followed by a continuing ed day on April the fourth. I believe Easter comes, or Easter is the twenty-seventh of March next year, so so the spring break's gonna follow Easter. The last day for employees, for teachers, if we don't have any inclement weather to have to make up, is gonna be June the ninth. Last day for students, June the eighth. Graduation for this calendar would occur on Friday, June the third. And you can see there at the bottom of the days for the faculty senate meetings are being scheduled. So are there any questions right now regarding Calendar B?
Any questions? I don't think there's any questions yet, you may have some comments here, finish or something.
We put this, there was a question initially about the pay dates, when those would occur, and I wanted to share that information with you. With the first calendar, Calendar A, employees would be paid on August the twenty-eighth.
The first pay would be August twenty-eighth?
And the last pay would be June the fifteenth.
Can I add something?
Sure, I thought you might wanna jump in there.
The only way that we can make this possible is using that D-School sub-call-out program. That's on operational weekend, I'll make that happen. Because that fits all the data in the system that keeps us from having to key everything in.
Now, explain, what are we referring to?
Our sub-call-out system? That.
Okay, we call it.
E-School.
It's E-School solutions.
Since we have that, see, we've never been able to do this before, but since we have that, and you turn us off about it, we think we can make it happen. Well, we'll have to make it happen.
We will make it happen.
It'll happen.
It's all, it's all part of it. It's all part of it.
Okay, on Calendar A, then the first payday would be on the twenty-eighth of August.
That's right, then the last, last payday would be June the fifteenth. And we impressed that upon our employees, and we'll make sure they understood that, you know, their last pay would be on the fifteenth of June, just in case, you know, we would have inclement weather, we'd need to continue with school up through June the thirtieth next year. If, if the choice is Calendar B, the first payday would be Friday, September the eleventh, and the last payday would be on June the thirtieth. So with Brenda's assistance, thank you Brenda, we were able to secure a vote, which I've shared with you in your packet, to the two calendars. Now, we have approximately thirty, is it around five hundred full-time employees? We received four hundred and twenty-nine votes at this point, by, and we've missed a few people, and we know those will trickle in, we'll get those, those votes. But as of right now, there's two hundred and thirty-three votes have been cast for Calendar A, and a hundred and ninety-six for Calendar B.
Yeah, is everyone, was everyone aware of the, the pay dates when they voted?
Yes. Yes, we made sure that that was communicated for the final vote.
Mr. McKip, why do you have an election on both calendars?
There is an elections scheduled for next, May of two thousand sixteen. Yeah, I see, you know what, I have the same problem, because I, I keep, I'm looking at this year's calendar, and then I'm thinking about next year's calendars, and talking to people. I mean, my brain's insatiable, I mean, it really is, calendar. Trying to keep it all straight.
If you have more about it, it's time to purchase, I assure you.
Okay, I'll be, you know, willing to answer any questions if anyone has.
Okay, just a couple, I'm not, more comments, I suppose, than anything else. I noticed on Calendar A, and this is something we hear, we talk about a lot, that Memorial Day weekend coincided with graduation.
That's correct.
Yeah, because sometimes that's been an issue, people come in for the holidays and all, we're on the eve, and it really wouldn't work out that way, so, I mean, that, I guess it's just one point. The other, of course, is Christmas, the two-week vacation at Christmas on, on Calendar A, opposed to, not quite a two-week on Calendar B, which has had mixed returns on that, some people say it's been too long, and others say it's okay, we had some of those. It was too long this year, but, like you say, the Calendar B is more similar to the one we had this year, isn't it, as far as starting dates and things like that?
We had, we had a third calendar that we, that we considered having employees vote upon, like we did last year, that would have brought the employees back a week earlier, August the fifth, but the committee, based upon the results of last year's voting, because that calendar got no support, aren't they? Because of the early start, we, you know, just made a decision to put one out there again this year. Seems the trend in the other counties as well has been to look at a little start, a little later start date. Is that right?
There's two in this race of the start that are waiting, which would be Wayne and Cal, they're wanting to start a little later next year. And Canall already did it this year.
Starting a little bit later? Yeah, it's always a gamble, no matter what you do.
They're, they're going at the end of semester before Christmas break.
And we've done that before, our calendar, year before last, we, we completed the first semester before Christmas break.
Alright, so this is the first public hearing, and one more will be required on the seventeenth of March? The next one? Two required, okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Is that, is that just a preliminary vote, and then is there another revote, or is that what stays, or is that what?
As long as the calendar stays the same in the vote, there won't be a need for another vote. Other than we just wanna make sure that all of our employees have had an opportunity to, you know, voice their choice.
So you'll revise that if need be, right?
And we come back on the seventeenth, I should have updated numbers.
When's the last pay this year?
June thirtieth.
June, yes, June thirtieth.
And do you guys take spring break, what, what's your order of make-up days?
We're gonna discuss that tonight. It's on one of the agenda items.
Question I get a lot is people, employees want to plan a spring break vacation, then some counties would want to come and take those for snow days, that's the question I get a lot.
Well, and we're aware of that, but when we adopted this calendar in, in school camp this year, we emphasized to everyone that that was spring break, and should we have an excessive number of inclement weather days, that it was subject to change, so we made that clear from the get-go. If, once again, we haven't decided what to do, but, you know, there's two sides to that argument, the other is, I don't wanna stay later and want to take up the spring break, but we made clear to everyone that that was a possibility.
The other thing is the testing one, did I say?
The testing one.
Make up your days after the test or before the test?
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, there's a period, sorry. Okay, we'll deal with that here a little bit later. Okay, anything else from Mr. McKip about the next year's calendar, before you let him go, and start thinking about something else?
Thanks for letting me ask questions before, appreciate it.
No problem, here, welcome, anybody who likes to ask questions. Okay, if not, then we'll go ahead and wait till the seventeenth, yeah, we'll probably update this a little bit before that, maybe you can get some, pick your calendar. Alright, let's see here, next, we did that, so it's on that side, would be Mr. Christian, Devin Christian, simulated workplace, Dr. Freeman, County Hospital.
Yes, sir. That'll be that right there. I know we've already discussed this in our other meeting, but I gave you some more. Basically, it's just a highlight of what we talked about before.
This is something official I have here.
Yes, sir, that's, that's the, that's the main document.
Okay, I thought maybe that's reasonable, I got that.
You and Ms. Luth spoke, you have to sign that. This just, again, just, I'm gonna spend a lot of time, wanna begin, because we spent that online, but this is something, this is the new initiative, which is wanna be fully implemented year after next, this, we're just wanting to begin the pilot program, because in two thousand sixteen, it's, it's for real. And it's the new, new wave of, new initiative, new wave of CTE. And that first, that little first page, this is kind of the highlight, I kinda condensed what is on that in the, in the first page, it's there's two, two pages of that document you have, Mr. Christian, I just condensed those. There's, a lot of this information's in that, that was a PowerPoint presentation, it's online on the CTE site. Again, it's a lot of good stuff there, it's, again, it's what's happening. A lot of people are, are been involved in for the last couple of years. A lot of positive comments at the CTE conference about it. Especially the drug testing, everybody was very high on that. It just, it just, it's just what's, if you look through that, I think that one of the key things is, it, once it becomes, and once you get it going, and get it up and running, and get some of the kinks earned out of it, what it does is, is your instructor becomes a facilitator. And that's, that's in the IPI that we use, you know, that's, that's a, that's a level six in the IPI, when you look at that, that's, that's what we're after, that's the highest level of instruction. When the, when the instructors are basically facilitators, and the kids are running the clients, and that's what you're looking for. But I've just, you know, if you had any questions, in the meantime, I think our, our staff is, is really on board, and they're, they'll be going to some professional development in April. Some of us going to Domingo, and some of us going to Putnam County, so.
Just the simulated workplace, and just as a, I guess, a summary of it, it's just, this would function as if it were a business.
Right.
And will, will all of the different CTE programs be involved in this?
Yes, they're all, all eleven of them will be.
So it's just like a little mini-business, and they will have certain obligations?
They'll have a company name, and they'll have, you know, they'll, they'll develop their, all of their policies and procedures, and they'll have business meetings, and they'll, they'll have a, now, all that stuff, they'll take turns in doing all the different positions, everyone will have that, there'll be a time clock.
And make their own decisions, I guess, within?
Right. Again, in the beginning, it'll be, you know, the teacher will be implementing a lot of this, but as it progresses, again, the, the ultimate goal is student, student-led, student-run.
You said that drug testing is a, a component of this, is that true of every student that's in the program?
It'll be random, I think forty percent of your population in, in the programs will be tested.
I mean, if every student's in the CTE program, they're, they could be part of that forty percent?
Correct, yes, anyone.
Anyone.
Again, that's all, that, that tab's picked up by the state, some of them will have uniforms. That, that's, that's one of the things, too, they'll have to have a, a uniform, which again, the state will pick up that as well.
Since this is being mandated by the state year, year after next, and obviously there won't be a lot of extra expenses, are, will the state fully fund all, for all these extra expenses?
Yes, from my understanding, is the state will, will take care of the uniforms, and as well as the drug testing.
Of course, there's gonna be a lot of that, other extra things.
Uh, I don't really see that there's a lot of overhead other than that, honestly, I mean, it's just, you're just running your business to fit your, whatever your program is, and then what, what you do is, once you get, you'll have the business and industry, whatever it is, you would have people come in and conduct, they, they would, you know, have the walkthrough, and then you would get, they would grade your program. And then you would have a score, and then if, if you didn't meet the criteria, then they would give you, you know, what you need to work on, they would, would whatever, you know, whatever you were fishing in, they would provide you with ways to, you know, spread that out. And then if you made it, you know, there's bonus money and that kind of thing, and you work off of that. Of course, really, we're doing that in, in a lot of our programs now, actually, several of our programs are, are basically doing, they, they work, and and we have our auto, they work on several different automobiles for different people, and they conduct a lot of business. So this is something to be, and just like welding does the same thing, they make different, you know, projects where people come in, want different things, and they make them.
Will, will they each have a, a company that partners with them, and the people from that particular company that is aligned with that particular CTE program come in and work with them?
Correct, mhm. And at the end, that'll be there, they'll come in and do their review, and their scoring of their business.
We know, are these local companies, or do they, I guess there aren't a lot of the plug ones that, on this.
I'm not exactly sure, we're, we're gonna, I think that's probably comes through your, you know, your, the board that you have in your CTE, your advisory board, would probably bring in, those, would be those people.
I think they have a, I think the state, maybe, they have a list compiled of companies, and then you contact, and they would partner with that particular program in that school, and it depends on their location, and, and the ability to get their people to that location, that, that was my understanding from, I never, I mean.
That's why I think it's, it's good that we implement it now, so we can work out some of that stuff, and learn some of the, you know, the, the intricacies that we don't know, I mean, we don't wanna be behind the eight ball when it starts, really, I think if we get a leg up on it, we'll have a better opportunity to be more successful with them.
Are you saying that we're gonna start a year before it's gonna be required?
Yes.
Are there, do you know if there are other counties that are gonna pilot also?
Oh, there's already several that, that are involved in, in what we've.
Oh, already doing?
We've had instructors go out and visit their sites, and see how it's being run. Ralph R. Willis down in Logan, they do a good job, they're one of the, Toshmango Central, I think, was voted the best simulated work, they won an award or something for their, and they're a comprehensive high school, just like us, and they have a lot of similar programs.
I can see the advantage of starting a little bit early, making some of these businesses that you wanna coordinate with, or might get ahead of someone else, maybe? Do I have any questions?
Now, just wanted to, is there a specific date you need to?
Well, you can just, I already turned in one part of, I thought he was gonna call the weather. You can just put the date there, and I've already spoken to the gentleman that's in charge of this, he's, he and the CTE at the state, they're a very accommodative group of people, and they're and I'll be going to the LEA, and I've spoken with Mr. McKip about this today, but I just wanna get your all's thought, do you want me to proceed with the Pro-Start program, trying to bring that back, because that would have to be written up, have to rewrite that back into the LEA. up, have to rewrite that back into the LEA plan, and we're having a workshop on that Friday.
I think, what would, Ms. Big Kid or Ms. Luke, Mr. Big Kid give me to talk about that, okay?
And, you know, that's a working document, so that's something that can be implemented, it doesn't have to all be implemented Friday, but.
Ms. Luke's, give me to talk, something, or she'll share it.
Just, what's the update on the, in the building construction, the building that they're working on?
The building is ready for the aluminum siding or the siding, metal siding that they're putting on, and the frame's built, and it's ready to go, I think they're just waiting on the materials to put the rest of it together.
Are they putting insulation in that?
I didn't get a chance to go over there today, I meant to, but unfortunately, there was some things that happened that I didn't get to.
If not, that building will sweat every time you get it right tight, the environmental condition, it'll ruin everything that's in there.
Now would be the time to put everybody to check on, would you check on that?
Kind of suggested, though, Mr. Chris.
Insulation.
Certainly, I'll certainly see what's going on.
Appreciate it.
But he said they had ten hours in it right now, and their goal was to have it together for twenty man hours, what, let's see.
Okay, nothing else, thanks, Mike.
Thank you all, thank you all.
Okay, moving right along here, last, certainly not least, John Byrd, LCH Baseball. Mr. Lambert again.
I wanna stand in for him. Good evening, everyone, thanks for hearing us again. Would it be all right if I stand over here so that you can see? I promise that I'll be more briefed than last time. Well, I appreciate it, okay, the last time that I was here, a few weeks ago, we came in to give you an update on the things that we have been doing the past few years with our baseball program, and we gave you, and told you what our plans were and how we wanna try to reach those goals. You go ahead, Coach, and turn that on there. When I was hired five years ago, this will be my sixth year, actually, six years ago, soon as I got hired, we went to work trying to secure funding for our program, and the first thing that we were able to get was a grant with the state legislature for thirty thousand dollars, and that happened probably, maybe a month or two after I got the job. And later in the season, or later in that first year, we got a twenty-five thousand dollar donation from the county commission, and that was for a whole cornucopia of activities and projects that we had going on. Then in two thousand eleven, we got another grant from the legislature for twelve thousand, and two thousand twelve, another one for ten, and two thousand fourteen, we got, which was last year, the county commission gave us fifteen thousand dollars, and that was primarily for our scoreboard, and then we got another one for five thousand dollars from the legislature, that was, was actually a ten thousand dollar grant, we split that with softball, and also Parks and Recreation has donated up to eight thousand dollars since two thousand ten to us, and we've basically been able to secure over a hundred thousand dollars in financial help from outside sources to build our baseball program. And this is where the money we spent, this is, this is some of the projects, and we've got other projects, smaller projects, these are some of the main projects that we spent money on. The first thing we did is we raised our outfield fence, and that cost us nine thousand dollars, the next thing we did was we bought a windscreen for our fence, was over six thousand dollars, and that's, if you drive by, you can see that over there, it says Lincoln County. We purchased crushed red brick for our infield over two thousand dollars, that's an estimate. We bought a pitching machine, if you've ever been back to our indoor practice area back there, we're very, very proud of that area, we feel like we're, we have as nice an indoor practice area as anybody in the state, anybody. I've been told by several private instructors that the only indoor facilities they've seen that were any better were college, so, so we're very proud of that, and we've even, in the last few weeks, we've actually done some more work in there and added more lockers because we're growing out the seams, we're busting out the seams with players, we didn't have enough lockers to take care of everyone. Let's see, we bought a large pitching machine that stays in our, in our indoor facility, it was over five thousand dollars, we bought a smaller pitching machine that we take back and forth between the field and this facility, we brought it over today so that we could set it up outside and catch fly balls out in the parking lot, that was one of, that was our outfield practice, we caught fly balls in the parking lot today, and we also use it, we take it over to the field once the weather gets better so that we can utilize it there. We bought indoor, indoor netting for our cages in there, those were over seven hundred dollars a piece, we bought two of those, our indoor turf, we got a great deal on that, we spent over three thousand dollars on that from a company down in Georgia, we've spent fourteen thousand, a little bit more than fourteen thousand dollars on our scoreboard, which we're extremely proud of, it's absolutely the most beautiful baseball scoreboard that I've ever seen, I'll just be honest, in the high school level. We just completed, and sixteen thousand dollars worth of work on our bleachers, our chairback seats, we've estimated that we've spent in the area of forty thousand dollars on our concession stand slash press box, and, you know, basically, Coach Byrd, how many square feet did we say that was over there?
Twelve hundred square feet.
And it's basically a small apartment, it has, you know, if you wanted to consider it a dwelling, it has two and a half baths and a kitchen, huge kitchen, and.
In any case, I'm happy to go.
Well, you know, if I stay in this business long enough, I'm afraid that I may end up having to sleep on the couch over there a little, and I just, you know, it, and we put that in there because we're, everything that we do, we wanna do it first class, we wanna be the best, and we wanna have a, as I've mentioned before, a safe environment for our referees and officials to come and dress and basically hang out prior to the game and after the game, so that they don't have to worry about parents or irate parents or anybody like that messing with them. And that was one of the, I actually had a question, one of the referee, one of the officials has already texted me wanting to find out if we had a dressing area, which I don't know if anybody else has one for officials, we wanna be the front laser on that, we wanna, we wanna beat everybody with a punch on that. And also, our yearly operational costs since two thousand ten is probably in excess of ten thousand dollars, that's a real low estimate, we probably need twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars every year just to take care of basic operating expenses like baseballs, socks for our kids, belts, hats, things that we have to have, just, you know, replacement uniforms, helmets, you know, helmets are really, those are, that was something that the SSAC did in their rules clinic this year, is they emphasized making sure our helmets were all safe, and that's another thing that we feel like we're blazing the trail of, is I'm the, we're the only school that I know of in the whole state that has individual batting helmets for their, for their players, which is, which is, it makes it to where the kids take care of their own equipment, plus, it's cleaner, it's healthier for them. I've already purchased, I actually had to call today in order for more batting helmets 'cause, again, we're busting at the seams with players, we just don't have enough to put in, put for the kids. But as you can see, our total, we have actually put a lot, we've put several thousand more dollars into our facility than we've taken in, and that is because of the fundraisers that we, we take part in, we have two or three or four fundraisers every year where we sell items and make money, and we also raised over ten thousand dollars for our new chairback seats, we sold those at a hundred dollars a piece, and I just got today, I got our, we had the graphics art department at the high school, I've been working with Ms. Jessie Smith for months, getting designs and, for decals to put on her seats, and we just got those finished today, Coach Byrd went over and picked those up, so we're moving right along. And, let's go on and go to the next.
Man, I had one.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That's on mine. What we're not figuring in here is labor cost as well. I used to build houses for a living, so usually you double the amount if you build a structure by labor cost, and we provide all of our labor for free, so all of our volunteers and all the work we do is free, and you can, the stuff that does require labor is no cost, so we save almost, you know, seventy-five percent of that would be added on if we hadn't paid for it out.
So we feel like that in the past five years, we've probably put close to a quarter of a million dollars, parts or materials and labor and so forth into our facility over there, and one thing that we're very proud of is that we've all, we've been able to do it without having to come to you guys for help, and that's, that's something we don't, we haven't wanted to do, we've tried very hard to do it on our own, but as we progress through our projects, and as each project gets bigger and more complex, it's starting to reach the point now where we have no choice, we've got to have help from someone. Now, we, are we ready to go ahead? We, we approached, actually, I'm gonna back up, when I talked to you before with our Board of Education before, I emphasized that we weren't asking for anything, we just wanted to let you know what we've been doing and what our plans are, and since that time, we've went and, we went before the county commission and made a presentation also similar to this, and we also, Coach Byrd personally, well, we wrote letters to all, to our state senators and our delegates, Coach Byrd personally drove to the Capitol and hand-delivered each letter and met with both of our senators and all of our delegates, Jeff Eldridge was kind enough to take him around and introduce him, and, well, we approached the county commission, I'll back up again, we approached the county commission and was advised to first request funding from the Lincoln County Board of Education or the School Building Authority. We researched the SBA and found out that they're not, they're not into funding these types of projects. Both of our senators personally, we approached both senators personally, all five delegates, and the message we received from the senators was that they were willing to form a committee for this project, and, and we were advised by them that we needed to come again before the Board of Education and request some help from the Board of Education. Basically, the way, the idea that we're getting from the county commission and from the legislature and the senators, and those are the people that's basically funded us the whole way, that's our, those are our people that we went to when times were tough and we were able to get things out of them and get help from them, but the county commission, they indicated that they would be willing to possibly match something if we could get something from the board, and the senators, did they, they indicated the same thing, what was it, Mr. Kirken, or Senator Kirken doll?
Yeah, he mentioned it about the committee, he was really interested in it, talked about when he was in Logan County, and he mentioned the interest in forming, getting all the delegates and the two senators together to form a committee, but they was wanting to, he gave me some directives to do first, and so that's what we're doing, that's why we're here.
Ready to go to the next one, Coach? Okay, what did we do, well, we, I guess we went ahead of ourselves, the recommendation to delegates and senators was first to receive a commitment from the Board of Education, and this is my second time since I've been, I've been teaching for twenty-six years and coaching for twenty-six years, and I've been involved with a lot of, lot of projects over the years, and this is the second time I've ever been before the board, the first time was a few weeks ago. So we're real, you know, we have a lot of pride and we want to do things on our own, but we've reached a point now where we have to have help, we just don't have any other, we don't have any other recourse, and we're, and I told you, we're busting at the seams, we have thirty-one kids out for baseball, and, and ten of them are, eleven of them are ninth graders, I think I have ten or eleven sophomores, two juniors, two juniors on our team, the rest of them are freshmen, sophomores, and seniors, and what's happening is, is we don't have enough facilities, or we don't have enough resources to handle the numbers that we have. When we first started, we were, we felt very blessed if we were to get twelve, thirteen kids out, it was just a struggle to keep enough players on the team to play. As we've grown and as we've expanded, now the, it's interest is at an all-time high, we have, we have more kids than we really, you know, we're right at the edge of what the resources that we have as far as coaching goes, and basically, we're trying to build and make opportunities for all of our kids, not just the elite ones that are juniors and seniors, we need to take care of everybody from the bottom up, because not everybody comes into a program with college athlete written on their forehead or on their chest. My son is an athlete in college right now, he's in, he's in his fourth year at West Virginia Tech, and he never started a basketball game until the third game of his senior year. He was a bench warmer all the way through, and he developed and got to the point where he was able to get a college scholarship, so if we, if we turn our backs on kids like that, or we just turn a blind eye to the kids like that, then who knows how many that we, that we, you know, we take, pull the rug out from their, their opportunity to play at the next level, and we want to provide those opportunities for those young kids, and one way of doing that is the lights, the lights seem like a luxury in a lot of respects, but it's not, we've made it this far without them, but like, we talked about the school calendar today, if we have any more bad weather and we have to lose spring break days, let's say that we have three, two or three more bad days and we end up having to lose days for spring break, well, I have games scheduled that whole week, RC and JV games, and they're during the day, because we, that's the only way we can play double headers is at home, is when we play day games, we're like the Cubs, we can't play at night, and if we lose spring break games, guess which one of those teams that I have to get, I have to cancel, I have to cancel those JV games, because then we'll have to, we have to start games by five o'clock in order to have a realistic chance of getting in before it gets dark. Sometimes we end up having to lose part of, you know, we have to cancel a game and cut it short because we don't have enough light to play safely, so if we lose those days and we start having to cancel games, and that, those JV kids, those young kids are the ones that miss out, and, you know, if we have lights, we can schedule games at six o'clock in the evening, we can get twice the, twice the fans there, we'll make more money, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to provide playing opportunities for our young kids and developmental opportunities for those. And last, we did a informal poll, I have, I have dozens and dozens of high school baseball coaches on my, on my phone list, and toward the end of last year, we did a poll, I sent out messages to all the AAA and AA high school baseball coaches I had, and I said, can you tell me any AAA schools that you know of that you've ever played against that does not have lights? And one school, there was only one school, and out of all those schools, they mentioned it was Willing Park, and, but, the coach said, Willing Park, but they're installing lights either this year or next year. So, to basically put, you know, make a long story short, we're the only, we're about the only AAA school, I don't, I can't say in the state, but I can, I can confidently say in this area, this geographical area, we're the only school in the state, in this area that doesn't have lights, and it really handcuffs us, it puts us at a disadvantage, and it's also, it's a mental thing, you know, it's a pride thing, I mean, we want to make everybody in the state stand up and take notice of us, and we want to, you know, and when, finally, finally, teams are coming in and our kids feel proud of what we have, we walk with our chests out and our heads high and our shoulders back because we have something to be proud of now, and when, quite frankly, when we started, it was, it was an embarrassment, you know, I got embarrassed every time, and my kids got embarrassed every time somebody would show up at a, at a game because of our facilities, and it's no fault of any of ours, you know, it's just the way the hand we were dealt, but we're trying to claw, claw, claw out of that hole, we need some help, and do we have any more questions and answers? So that's my spiel, and that's the truth, I swear it, we need help, I don't know what else to do, and that's, that's where we're at.
Oh, I think we, we've gotten that message, Greg.
Oh, I think we, we've gotten that message, Greg. Uh, yeah, and we certainly understand the need for, why you need them and, you know, made a good argument on all of it, made all these points. I guess the basic things, you know, how much money do you have to have and how much are you asking from us?
Well, we're gonna officially ask you for all of it, ninety-five thousand dollars. That's what we're gonna officially ask you. But we will be willing to take anything that you feel like that you can send our way. Because whatever we can get, we will use that to go after more. But we know that we can, that our, we're, we're pretty much at a roadblock now unless we get something that we can go, go back to them with.
Right. Well, okay, that's what, of course, we have to talk about this, but I, I think, I can't speak for everybody, but, you know, that amount is not gonna be realistic for us.
I understand.
Mrs. Gandy over there, she, I, I, she's, she's, she gave us, several months ago, we asked the treasurer to give us a, a feel for how much money we had that wasn't obligated. And she did at that time. And I keep a little thing on my desk at home. Whenever we spend any of that money, we've had a couple of settlements we had to do, we've had a couple of things that we've taken money. So I've kinda got how much I think we have left. Then I know some things are on the horizon. So, uh, you know, once again, we would love to do that, but I, I don't think that's realistic at all, and I think Birdie would concur with that. Go ahead, you want to say?
Are you getting any of the student activities money from the high school? Do they give you a certain amount of money?
No, but I'm, I don't know of any.
That was a question I had to Mr. Snyder.
Well, that's what you should start.
I don't know. Well, I don't even know what a student activity money is, I'm unaware of that.
Well, a couple of years ago, uh, you know, because we oftentimes received, we had schools come in, wanting this, that and the other all the time. So what Birdie came up with was where we gave additional funds to all the schools, and I'm assuming proportioned in some way that, that largely were, you got to work. And that money, instead of maybe not necessarily what you're talking about, but a lot of things would go on, instead of coming to us, they would go to see the principals, okay, how much that money that you have available, can we, you know, have a little bit of it or something like that? So I think that's what she's saying that, and I know.
Well, I'm more than willing to go take any avenue that we need to take, I'm more than willing to do that.
Well, this needs to be something that needs to be cooperatively done. Um, you know, I, I think that we can help, you know, we'll have to get our heads together and see how much there, and I, and it seems to be like the commission is willing to help. Mr. Snyder may have some assistance there. So I think it's gonna be, and probably all those other entities that you all talk to will, you know, get it done. But, uh, you know, what we'll have to do is, you know, we'll have to get with, with Ms. Gandy and just kinda see, uh, you know, what she sees on the horizon, because a lot of things come about that we aren't aware of.
I understand.
At one time, we, you know, we just needed to know kinda where we stood. And I know where I think we are. But, uh, you know, we wanna do what we can and I, and I think we'll, we'll do that.
I wanna, I, I wanna apologize, I neglected to, to introduce John Byrd. He wasn't at the last time, he's one of my assistant coaches.
I thought he was gonna talk to you.
And this is Mike at Canterbury, he is one of our also assistants back here, Mr. Canterbury. Uh, Mr. Coach Roach was with me the last time, but while we came in here, he stayed down at the indoor area and, and finished up the kids.
Man, I had some, actually, some dollar amounts came up when I was talking to the representation at the Capitol. And they were discussing, uh, this was, you know, approximate, usually you get five dollars from each representative, that's a common denominator amount. And so they were, they were thinking thirty-five, you know, seven times five is thirty-five. Yeah. But, uh, so they were thinking thirty-five.
For the legislature?
Yeah, possibly. If everything's possible with big government. But, um, that way, it, it's almost a numerical money, you know, you have that baseline to work off of. And it's a goal.
Now, were those the Capitol and delegates, whatever that district is?
It's very, it's very technical. Their districts are, are, you know, I could go through the names.
Well, I mean, I know, I'm just trying to say, those seven, is that, does that include the three that represent?
Yes, anything that touches Lincoln, I can. There's five delegates and two senators, even if it was a little wedge and like Carol Miller, just, you know, whatever, I still talk to her, you know.
Okay, so those three, they're three there, okay, they're part of it, so.
Yeah, there's five delegates and two senators. And, um, but they, you know, they were throwing it all out there and that was just, just rough talk, you know, and I was walking as fast as I could down the hallway during this session. But, you know, that's, like you said, it, it seems like nobody wanted to take the first step into this project. And the County Commission got hit with something hard this year, which we may already know about, but that was kinda unscheduled for them. But they always been generous with helping us. But, you know, anything would be a good start, you know. Usually the halfway mark is a good start, but I don't know what you gotta have. That's, that could be a goal because usually they'll match and then, you know, you go from there.
Yeah, I'll be talking to them about them complicating this later.
Uh, well, you know what, they actually said that, I'm gonna be honest, they were like, uh.
Go ahead, tell me what they said.
Uh, I'm not gonna say any names, but, uh, they, they said, you know, that's good, it's good that you're here and I appreciate it. And they said to get, just like we said, to go back to the board and ask. And, uh, and they said, once they come up with that numerical amount for you guys, to send them a letter and request it.
Yes, they did.
Because they have to have that, um, trail to get that committee to make it more formal. Does that make sense?
Probably, yes.
Just the coach sending the letter is, that's not as powerful as the board sending that letter of, of recommendation and showing your commitment to the program and your commitment to this project.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with a couple of my colleagues about that.
And I wanted to add, it wasn't just me up there, we had pretty much every mother, father, eighteen-year-old child that could call, uh, grandparent, and there's been a lot of people calling up there to the point when I walked in, she said, are you from Lincoln County? She said, here's the form you didn't fill out.
We already had the.
So I walked in, I was like, yes, ma'am.
We already had the form filled out, ready to hand through.
And I, I said, this form, and I handed it underneath to them. And she said, yes, my goodness, they're wearing me out.
And she said, who is this guy? Tell him to quit calling, we got a message.
So it, it's not just the coaching staff wanting all these bells and whistles, this is a community affair that affects, you know, the younger groups coming up. Because, uh, we was doing the math, trying to figure out where we're gonna put them again next year, is we have an eighth grade group of ten to fifteen, we're losing seven, we're gaining eight more. And then the year after that, we only lose two juniors, and we're gaining ten or fifteen more after that. So we, we'll have fifty, maybe sixty kids the year after next.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we have to have some time management here, we just don't have, we're gonna ask more, more coaches obviously too. You know, it, it, it's growing and we're competing too. And, you know, like I said, more kids involved, trust me, I'm the law enforcement, less drugs, less, more activity, they stay active, they're healthier, you know, and it, it just seems like we're growing. And I always think that, but.
If you, all you had to do was go to the basketball game last night and see how this community in our county has, how they'll rally around, uh, a group of people, and of course, the girls softball's a good example of that too, how they, they're, they're starved for this. We, we went too long and these people, they're, you know, the people around here will go crazy over our, our, our sports and athletics, you know, they're ready for it, they're ready for it. All we gotta do is do our part, and that's what we're trying to do.
And one thing I would add too is, this could be a long-term thing. We could get, um, just started basically a savings account to this. I mean, that, that's the thing, is we need this immediately, which you guys know that, but, you know, budgets, money talks, and if you don't have it, you don't. But, you know, the goal is to have these lights up by next season because of our capacity and problems. I feel confident that, you know, we're, you know, they'll manage at the state level, the commission will step in at that point. I think it's gonna have the ripple effect afterwards, I really do.
You know, once you get started, that's sometimes first steps, that's, you know, we've long felt that, you know, the high school campuses have worked in progress, you know, we've done various things there, and a lot of volunteer work's been done by different team groups there also. But, uh, Mr. Christian back here in football, I don't know what we're gonna do, and he's, he's a big money item, so we're, he's harder to work.
Ninety-five thousand dollars would get you some debt.
Yeah.
But we understand, but what we'll do, uh, we'll get together and here in the next week or so, we'll give you an answer.
Well, I think when you talk about facilities, you, you know, you're looking at a long-term investment for the kids of this county and not just kids the next five or six years. We're talking kids for the next forty or fifty years.
Yeah.
Long after we're all, you know, long gone and sitting around or whatever our, uh, deal is when we're done with education. And, and, you know, when you go to these other places, folks, it's, it's incredible what's, what these other places have.
We wanna be among the elite, but.
I think we can.
We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there.
Just, just like you see, just with the little bit that you all have done, the hard work, the kids take pride in that, and it has, it has increased their interest levels, it's increased their, uh, people wanting to play, and it just, it's just gonna happen. Because that's what, that's what they're, they're, they're hungry for. Because they've gone so long without it.
Yeah. To reiterate on that, I'm involved in Little Big too. I was, I had to resign as president because of all this, but we've had a large increase in signups to baseball and softball too. Because I believe, like Coach Christian was saying, just the interest, what they have to look forward to up the hill, they gotta climb up there, they want, they wanna play there. So if they see that and they know it's there and are proud about it, we'll do it.
When I went to school at Guyanian Valley, I played college sports. And when I went to school at Guyanian Valley, honest to goodness, I can tell you this honestly, one of the main driving forces that drove me to wanna be a college athlete is I wanted my picture in that trophy case with like Reggie Garretson. That was, you know, he went to Marshall, Marshall sends a picture, thanks for sending us Reggie Garretson. Well, you know, that was something I wanted to do. And that's the kinda things that we want our children to do. And if you go in our, if you go in our facility, you'll see a, a big, a big mural type fathead is what it's called, of one of our players that's playing at West Virginia Tech that we put up to honor him. And we wait till they're seniors, because we don't wanna do anything till we find out that they're gonna stay. But, you know, and we wanna do that all the way around. And, uh, you know, because of this, because of our growth, we're getting, we're getting, we're just getting so many people and, well, we gotta have some. And one more thing, five years ago, ninety-five thousand dollars would've got us a little bit. But now, five years later, ninety-five thousand dollars will just about put us where we need to be. Because we put over a hundred thousand dollars into that place in five years and it's just been out, you know, because the, our, our, our parents and our circle of boosters basically have went out and done it. Thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate that.
Is baseball season one with your practice opening?
Yesterday was our opening day.
Second, okay.
Yesterday was our opening day.
Yeah, the, the lighting project wouldn't be for the evening, obviously.
No, I know, I knew, I knew the season began right around now. Hey Jeff, you might wanna tell them, you know.
You're bleeding up, John.
To get my, to get my support, you know.
It's not my computer, it's not my computer.
All right, thanks, mate.
Thank you all so much for, for taking the time to listen.
We appreciate you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Me too.
Big gift, want to get out here by nine o'clock tonight, I'm, we're gonna have a long.
Is there something, Brad, is there?
Executive session or something, I'll make that, uh.
Is there ballgame on the night?
It's not gonna get to go in the office and watch it on TV about eight.
Sean, watch the ballgame.
Yes, I did.
Mrs. Wilkes, nice.
Good times.
Okay, you all, uh, we'll have to talk more about that, uh, the, 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 uh, the administrative life, good motion, uh, Ms. Curry, the segment, thank you, my Ms. Wilkes. This is Luke.
Okay, I'm a M.A., it's a real adult student, Tiffany Higginor, to write the best through the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Item B, according to the provisions of the United Policy, eight to ten school calendar and West Virginia Code eighteen dash five dash forty-five, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school calendar shall be revised as follows as a result of school cancellations for extreme weather conditions. We will note date of close, January the seventh, two thousand fifteen. The first make-up date is February the twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. January the thirtieth, the make-up date will be April the third, two thousand fifteen. February the sixteenth, the make-up date for that is May the first, two thousand fifteen. February the seventeenth, the make-up date for that is May the twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. February the eighteenth, the make-up date will be June the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. For February the nineteenth, the make-up date will be June the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. For February the twentieth, the make-up date will be April the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. We have February the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, and February the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. You all to, um, decide when those dates will be the make-up.
Well, I was thinking that the planning day would be moved and become instructional day and the fifteenth would be the last day, June the fifteenth.
What have, yeah, that, that P day will always be the last day. So that's what will take place, is that.
Well, I mean, as of right now, assuming we weren't dealing with this tonight, wouldn't the last day be June the fifteenth?
Would be the, last day for students would be the fifteenth and last day for teachers would be the sixteenth.
Okay, that's why I just said June sixteenth. I mean, that's what you had come in with.
And I didn't communicate anything about that P day because I'm not knowing what the rest of the winter holds.
Right, well, I understand that. I just was in my own little calculations, I thought the last day for students was the fifteenth, but you're agreeing that you're just saying the sixteenth is the planning day, right?
That's right.
Okay. Now, have you all done any, uh, gotten any input from any of the schools or anything as far as what their preferences might be?
Yes.
Anything you wanna share with us?
Here it is, I, I would say at this point, uh, the overwhelming majority of our teachers that's communicated with me or they've shared to their principals is that they would rather make up the lost instruction over spring break as opposed to extending to school year later in June.
You all gonna have any formal account?
No, 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 things done, conducted.
Well, the, uh, the input that I've gotten from both student, or both parents and teachers that have communicated to me is partly been ten to one in favor of spring break at the end of the day's week. I don't know about anybody else that's gotten any comments on it.
About half of that.
But most of what I've gotten, and a lot of the, our teachers have think that the best utilization as far as instructional purposes is to have it during spring break rather than at the end of the year when there's much other things going on. And, um, unfortunately, a lot of times, people think that school ends when the fourth really does. And that the best utilization for instruction is to have it sooner. And that's a lot of the basis for a lot of the comments that I've gotten.
That was a question, Brad, and earlier I, uh, Birdie received an email from Joe Panaz's office this afternoon, letting us know, letting school districts know that legislatures are looking at some calendar deals that could even impact our current calendar. Like it's more of a, it's like, stay tuned, you know, there may be some changes coming with.
Just like where you would add minutes to a day or something like that kinda stuff?
Kinda, kinda like if there's a national emergency, you can get forgiven on those snow days, they're trying to get to where it is.
I thought the governor had declared those when they happened.
Me too, but they're trying to pass.
Oh, they're gonna make something new, okay.
And, and we learned last year with the water crisis, even though the governor declares a state of emergency, ultimately, it's the state superintendent, right?
The only federal disaster area is exempt, stay there until next year.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any other comments about, so do you have any things for?
And that would be effective as passage around this fiscal year, if the passage still works.
Well, we're gonna wait and see what happens with that. We have to act as if nothing's gonna happen. Then, if something does, we'll judge it, go on.
I have a question. The team, softball team that wanted to go on the trip during spring break, can they still do that and use it as an educational use?
They could submit that, I don't know the basis of the education on those, but that would, that would go to the school principal, correct? Each principal would make that determination, they would get the request and they would see what their rationale and justification for it is and they rule on it. That, that happens at the, at the school level. Jeff, did you hear anything about what their plans are, just for informational purposes?
No, I, I really didn't know much about what was, well, I, I knew there was a, a bill that, that we look at next year.
No, I'm talking about the softball team.
Oh, softball, the, the last information I had was that they were wanting to go, leave on Sunday, I guess it would be Easter Sunday, and travel, uh, and then play on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and come back home.
Has Mr. Hoover, the coach, ever communicated anything? Has Mr. Hoover, the coach, ever communicated anything to you?
Yes, that's been a couple of weeks ago and I've not heard anything by, you know, since then. My conversations have really been my parents.
Did the coach, did Coach Hoover, was, did he give you the impression that's what he preferred those particular days or did he just, this?
My last conversation.
Possibility it might happen or not.
Yeah, a little, both, but you know, he was, he was gonna get in contact with whoever it is that's the head of the tournament, either the organizing of their Myrtle Beach, figure out what options that we had to participate, whether we could participate on the front end beginning of that spring break that we were on the back end. And at that time, he, he really didn't know. Jennifer McCain told me the other day that it would be those first few days, that Sunday through Wednesday.
Right, he may be waiting to see what we do, see if he can work around it or something like that.
They see this rowdy.
Yes, sir.
I suppose to one of the booster parents for softball believed last week, he told me that they were told by someone that they would have to charter a bus for this trip and that the cost would be prohibitive for chartering the bus to Myrtle Beach. So the softball needs plans to play in Myrtle Beach during that time where, I, I mean, please don't hold me to this, this is my recollection conversation, that those plans were off. So it might be that Jeff could talk to Mr. Hoover and find out his facts and prove that this was, uh, a, a, a pretty high up involved parent in the girl softball and that's what he told me, that the cost would be prohibitive and would keep them pulling on the trip. So I, I, for what I know, I don't think that softball business is a hostile building now, but I, I would like someone to confirm that if possible.
There was a conversation.
Pretty wild sort of info.
Okay, well, Jeff, Mitch Kiff says that there was such, he's had, there were those conversations.
In Dana Snyder's office, probably a week and a half ago.
With the principal Snyder.
Where we discussed across, you know, if they wanted to go out of state per our policy that they would have to charter a bus, they could not travel by car.
Yeah, I don't, you could hear all that rowdy, but what Jeff was, Mitch Kiff was saying to us that, that he had met with Mr. Snyder and, and maybe it was Mr. Hoover there too, I don't know. But anyway, the board policy requires out-of-state trips to be done by chartered buses. Parents can't, uh, transport kids nor can they use school buses. We require, uh, chartered buses for all these out-of-state trips. So they, once they realize that that was communicated with, to them, they may have come up with what you've heard, Rowdy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I, I can hear Jeff, I have my phone on Bluetooth barely, uh, but when I pick up, I cannot hear him at all. If he says anything for a while and picks up, well, he'll have to receive it to me, but I'll go back on Bluetooth.
Okay, we'll, I'll let you know if he says anything for, probably not.
Yeah, probably not.
We're just trying to get his name right.
Yep.
See him on the trip.
We're doing a lot better on that name, so. Well, does anybody have any, uh, recommendations, I mean?
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, Bertie.
If we're going to use the spring break, why don't we have them come back on Thursday and Friday and let them have, hopefully Tuesday, Wednesday, so they still get a break for Easter.
Well, that's one argument. Um, the other side though is, you know, if they come and move Monday and Tuesday, then they get five days off, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, there's, I'd probably think which is best.
It's snowed this week, my first time. Maybe all week. Would the board continue to make up during the spring break week? Or, I mean, would you use all five of those days? I'm asking as a grandmother.
I think personally what we decide tonight, we take two days, that's it for spring break. Some people will know.
Then the rest of it might be in June.
Yeah.
That's what Curry's feeling. He's thinking of, uh, I hope that we don't find out here two days from now that we're gonna already have to make up another one. Although Mr. Wilkinson has assured me that we're gonna have more days for flood or some kind of catastrophe.
I'm afraid if we do that though, Fred, that people are gonna say, well, you messed up my spring break vacation, now you're gonna cut into my summer vacation too.
Well, we're here for the kids, we, we've got to think of the kids. What the teacher and the P-Puppet say, that's besides the point, it's part of the time. And they're gonna say something no matter what we do, so.
I still think though with testing and everything coming up, that if they want us to break in on spring break, if we do need more, we probably should just go ahead and take that week and stay in school.
Yeah, just want, we don't know we need that week.
Well, why not?
But with realizing that that could go either way, I'm of the opinion we ought to take the first two days of the week, that's my feel.
And bring the students in.
Yes, that we make up Monday and Tuesday, we need the two days for the, for the, I mean, that's my, that's my thought.
And then if, if the legislators come back.
Look, Rowdy, I'm in agreement.
If Rowdy's in agreement with me, I want to mute him for a while, so he can't change anything.
If the legislators come back and, and excuse us some of those days, then we can give them their spring break back, is that correct?
Well, we just have to see what they say and when they say it.
I think Sun County's already asking for waivers. I mean, I could, I could think of two in particular, that's missed somewhere between fifteen and twenty days.
But those are, they missed four of the week, it's spring.
Right.
You gonna have any talking here?
Well, I don't think.
Well, save that, Miss Luke, what's your preference?
I don't get to vote, but my preference would be to take them on Monday.
Is that what you're recommending?
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay, uh, I'll make the motion that we make up February the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, on April the sixth, two thousand fifteen. We make up February the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, on April the seventh.
On second, man.
Mr. Wilkinson seconds there. Okay, all in favor of making up the two days on April sixth and seventh? Then all yes vote?
Yeah.
Rowdy said yes a while ago, so that's an all yes vote. And everybody keep.
Rowdy says yes again.
I know. Emphatically, okay.
That's aye.
And we'll, we'll keep our feathers crossed, but, uh, won't have to make any more decisions like that. Okay, uh, the administrative items as a whole then, there's only one other item on there, I guess, I should clarify that as, uh, as options or, uh, the second item on that motion, Brad, if you can use it, so that it, please. So let's vote on, uh, administrative item A then, please, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes on that, okay, it's good to find the motion, please. Ms. Curry?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Smith. Bertie?
Okay, item A, scheduled invoices totaling two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Envisors are available for public review in the county office.
Okay, you want to tell us that we've got all kinds of money, we can give them a hundred and fifty-five thousand or something?
No.
I'm gonna do that.
Now, what did you tell us the other day in our staff meeting? I said, do not spend anything unless you have to have it.
Tighten your belt.
Tighten your belt. It's what I just told everyone.
She waited till Greg left before she told you.
When I was out in the community, that we have tons of money, so, actions, so, yes, that's really the fact, and it's out in the community, the bottom.
Man.
I wish you'd have told me to tighten my belt.
I didn't realize waiting school wait for them, they worked.
In fact, there is a group that was born coming and, you know, over the football thing and that's just, we know you don't mind me. And I said, do you know what, you guys have to come to one of our finances.
We, 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 okay, uh, the scheduled invoices, is that, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay, it's good personnel, please, get a motion. Ms. Curry, second, thank you, Ms. Wilkinson, Bertie.
We have one, one section, A, is the format of short and or a long-term substitute professional personnel.
Okay, there's one item on there, is that an all yes vote for this key?
Yes.
An all yes on first hand, okay. Now, we've got the comments and concerns, if anybody have anything.
I have.
Ms. Wilson?
Several.
Several.
As you know, unfortunately, I'm on the, uh, extension service committee and we've had our, um, last meeting, uh, on the twenty-sixth, right before the board met, the last board meeting, I attended that and then ran over here for this meeting. Uh, three concerns that came up, all directed at the Board of Education, I don't remember any other concerns directed to any other entity or individual. Uh, they are requesting some gravel for the newly created farmer's market at Allen Creek because of the site is being used as a turning point for county buses. And I know this to be true because I've seen buses parked and were turning there.
Do you know if they've spoken, Mr. Cummins, about that at all?
I, I have no idea whether they have or not. Um, one of their concerns there is should there be gravel, uh, put in place without, their general knowledge that it be fine gravel because the, uh, gravel that's been put in there is, uh, almost impossible to walk on. How fine, Larry, what? I would say probably number four, white stone would be good. That seems to work out good on parking lots. Or fifty-seven, I wouldn't get anything larger than that. Fifty-seven, fifty-seven is really good. Had to go to the goat farm.
That would be the best.
That would really be the best.
That's what I use on my.
All right, moving right along.
Okay, so on that one, uh, has somebody communicated that with?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, all right.
The, uh, next request is a funding request, as you know, uh, we currently have the extension service fifteen thousand dollars a year. We're requesting an additional one thousand dollars for a total of sixteen thousand dollars. And the reasoning for this is that they have, uh, extra added expenses this year on travel, staff development, programming expenses, internet services.
Typically what happens, and I know that they may be in transition down there, but someone normally comes before the board in this time of the year, shares what they've done in the past and should they want to change in their, uh, funding, they make that and so they kind of send you a certain designate instead of, you know, I know when Ms. Roach was there, she'd come each year.
I think you possibly may have someone coming on.
Are you there? Can you, I tried to hang up on you, couldn't I get rid of you?
I don't get a real good signal, Rowdy. I, I don't get. Brenda wants these to call me back, okay, she'll, she'll do it. Give her a couple of seconds to get up here. He got disconnected. Okay. Bye-bye.
I looked at that, he's, I was just not.
Oh, God. Just moved, it's over.
Dale, oh, he's, he's, he sent me a message, I didn't see Dale Randall to call me.
I want to make notes.
That's what I'm hoping to see if I can find it.
Just go back on recent calls and we'll see if you'll get this number.
She got it. She got it. He sent me a message. She's got it.
He's having that sound off to hurt sons of Marshall.
Doesn't leave, that doesn't leave face.
I'm here.
Okay, we're trying not to hang up on you again.
Brenda, you put him down.
Appreciate that.
On the other sheet.
All right, okay, Mr. Wilkinson, we were, uh, I don't know.
We have, I have another.
Okay, I don't know what, you, did you hear Mr. Wilkinson's first two points on the extension service meeting, Rowdy?
I'm, I'm already asking for a twelve-hour at the farmer's market.
Okay, and then he said that they also wanted to increase the, uh, allocation that the board gives them from fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars a year, so that's kind of where we are now. Okay, Rowdy.
All right, the next concern, I, I had no, I, I couldn't speak to this at all. They expressed a concern that the, uh, our system, our Lincoln County school system's not assisting in the funding of, for Energy Express this summer and, uh, that our schools could not be used for that purpose. They expressed that as a result of this, there would probably not be an Energy Express program in Lincoln County this year. So I, this is all in this way, so.
So we're not giving them funding, is that what you're saying?
Well, funding, uh, not necessarily funding, but use of the school and of course that involves, from what I can understand, food service. We provide the cooks and buy food service for the Energy Express.
I don't know how it's funded, I mean, the instructor.
WVU, the way I understand it, I talked with David Roberts for a short period of time this year and I was able to catch him earlier, uh, he says WVU pays seventy percent of the total cost and the rest of the cost has to be made up on a local level through extension.
All of that, that doesn't necessarily have to be money, is it?
Encourage.
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 Right. Right.
I, I don't think we told them they could not utilize their buildings, that they had to fund them. Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't communicated. That's usually up to the principals, you know, what they have going on in their building, um, if they, you know, have the appropriate.
He was telling, he was, uh, the neighbor was telling me that, uh, they need to have a hundred kids a day or we'd be losing money, or the school system would be losing money on the, on the program.
We, I was gonna say, we don't.
We have gone in a hole. We have, there's no doubt about that. And, uh, and I talked to the lady at, um, WVU, uh, who oversees the Energy Express program and, uh, she was very aware of the situation that we're in in terms of funding difficulties, you know, strings to pay for. She thought that, uh, I'm trying to think of his name, who, it's not David now, there's another, another gentleman. Yeah, it's Jeremy. Jeremy, right. That there may be some other funding sources that they could tap into, to cover the added expenses of transportation, the custodian, the cook, those were all, uh, employees that we were end up covering their salaries.
We've paid those in the past.
Yeah. The way I understand it, four agents going to cover the custody costs. No one's come back, no one's come back to us and that, and that was from the lady in, uh, mortgage. Are we losing on food service, is this the only place we're losing?
Well, we, I had to pitch in for food service, but now, when I look at summer food service, it's, you know, all the different programs that run, you know, I can't just right off the top of my head say, you know, it was the Energy Express, but we did have to kick into the summer food service program, which tells me we didn't have enough children to eat, that's a different science that we have.
Are there other programs that are gonna occur this summer?
At the high school.
Is that the only place?
No food service there.
Well, I'm just trying to see, you know, that, other than Energy Express, are there any other school programs that are?
Robicursy through Twenty-First Century has some camps going on this summer, I can't.
Where is this now, I'm sorry?
These were key, the camps that would be taking place at Midway and at Hamlet because those are Twenty-First Century.
Long term or just for like?
Two weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Well, are we having any, uh, free meals for the kids in the summer?
Yes, I mean, she has, she will have a program, uh, but now how many sites, um, you know, she has to apply or whatever for so many sites that, uh, she will be pro, that she will be provided good for. Now, a couple of times we satellite, uh, you know, they cook the meals at Lincoln High School and there's, you know, we have satellite sites where they make the meals do. And, um, surprisingly, the people didn't eat. We, we had a, a site at, uh, Midway, we had Energy Express at Midway last summer, correct?
Yes.
Hardly anyone showed up, you know, other than the twenty students, you know, that were there. Uh, we had it, where else, Jeff, I can't, I'm.
At a Hamlet, Amway.
Hamlet, Amway. Hamlet and West End. And, you know, you'd think that people would come, bring their children or family or whatever, but I think with satellite, did we satellite it out to Ranger?
Yeah, for state and school.
Yeah, for state and school here, that, that whole time. And anyone that wanted to come in there could have that.
We sent school messenger home to remind parents that there were free meals at, we gave them all the locations. You would say that there were those people that would come out and eat.
Well, I'm getting that. Coming in to the express, you need free meals for those kids. So, wouldn't be costing anything to feed them, preparing eating meals anyway. I don't understand how that funding works, but is it like a hundred people eating?
I don't really have, I don't have enough knowledge.
Like fifty, if we have an average of fifty people who are eating every day, it would only pay for half of the cook's salary. Yep, what I'm saying, that person gonna be there anyway, if you're gonna burn free meals.
Now, I don't know how many locations there she's on a hand. I don't know how many.
She would have had, she had a picking site at Midway, probably because we had an Energy Express site there. That was the rationale for having.
Do you all know when she's gonna know this and share with us?
That's right, this is the time of year.
Then she starts looking at how many sites that she might have.
But she probably won't break into account, like what Fred's saying, whether there's a Energy Express program or not, whether she can have one, I can think, right?
Right.
You know, one thing, Larry, you might share with them at the, your next meeting, they need, you know, I realize they've kinda got a new, some new people there, but they need to come to us on these things. Like on the turning place, of course, they, once they know, they know, they should, they can contact Rob directly for gravel. But like the Extension Service, as far as their funding, they need to come to us and ask for this.
Always do before.
Yeah, and the Energy Express, the same thing, Rick McCall, wasn't he the one that would come about Energy Express or my confusion to people? But he, someone would come and try to plead the case of their, the program and, you know, here's how we wanna fund part of it and board to help in these other ways.
And the hell is helping students all the way?
They did all that.
Yeah, and somebody would come to us and present it to us, because see, they put you in the middle and no, no pantry, they, but you don't know all these details. And they send you as the messenger.
Well, they didn't send me. I...
Well, I understand. You just communicate. But I'm just saying, if you would just share that with them in the future, you know, if they would just come to us and, you know, whenever they are aware of these things and have these things. So, that way, if we worked on our budget for next year and all, if we're working on now, we can consider those things. But right now, I don't know what we can do, other than whenever Angie is, has a field for, we're going to food service, we'd like to know that for sure, what schools wanna offer what? If we have any options in that area, all we do are not. We appreciate you sharing that with us. Yeah, I don't know what we can. We need to know that before we can even think about anything, I think. Birdie, give a comment, your hand up.
I'm not so sure that we can give the four H any more money. Because the reason we can give them money now is because it's voted on with the excess levy. So, you know, but I don't know if we can take our state aid funding, our educational money and give it to another organization like that. You know, we kinda ran into that situation with the pantry box, or that we would...
Okay, now, like now, does our lady say that we give fifteen thousand dollars to the Extension Service?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, you know, I'm not real sure we can change that.
Well.
But what we may look at, you know, for more years, you know, we could look at changing the levy, so that maybe that they have to wait.
You'll clarify that, although you're pretty confident that's true, I think. But that, that's a good point. That's why, if they come to us and give us a little time, you can give input and they can hear the same things that we hear. But you'll clarify that, just in the middle for that part of it. Okay, anything else from anybody else? Any other comments or concerns?
I just have a question. Graduation, I know we've been over the calendar, but this is this year's calendar. What day's graduation on this year?
June the 10th.
And those, that's always constant, right? They don't lie. That one week thing is gone, apparently. Thirty-six.
And we did extend the grading period, I meant to say that earlier, for the, for the third nine weeks grading period at the high school as well as the four, six weeks grading periods for elementary and middle schools. Everything was moved forward, seven days to account for the days that we've lost because of...
So, the third nine weeks is seven days later than what it been to this summer. And at the high school, how is, where are they on?
Nine.
They're on that awesome.
Or six, the high school's six.
Okay, I get the confusion on that myself. Okay. But everybody's been extended a number of days that kinda correspond with what they can have right here. All right, anybody have anything else? Okay, just your information, I thought probably at the next board meeting, we'll put on the, in the discussion of the super tenancy, uh, this, 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 this year. We need to discuss that, potential, whatever we're gonna do in that regard, but we'll put that on the agenda because we have to act on this by June the 1st each, of, each year, the year that we have to complete that. So, we'll meet on the 17th, so that maybe, you know, the board needs to meet, have a bit of an executive session, we discuss that. See what comes of that, but if everybody feels like that's okay with you, we'll try to put that on the next agenda, okay, on the 17th. Okay, anything else? Chris, anything from you?
Yes, I wanted to be able to go over what the OEP A found is not, will not be public until their report in April. But I wanted to be able to go over that the funding is with you all prior to, so I didn't know if the 17th. Do you all think you have, how do you do that?
Is that something that, is that public info?
John can't, right, John can't hear. If it will be public when they, when they report.
I just wanna make sure that I understood that, Chris.
But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that we get that, what you can do that.
Now, what you need to do, I guess, Chris, is just, you know, see what our agenda, you know, unless it's, you get the energy day with bunch of things.
Because that's, that's our last one in March, is it? Do we have a, a what?
Thirty-first, thirty-first?
Well, yes, thirty-first.
We all, you can see what you think, Bayes, nobody.
It will, it will be, I, they think it will be the April State Morton Day. And that's usually around, what, October, fourteen, fifteen, something like that.
Good, so whichever you choose, who thinks best will be okay with us. Okay, anything from anyone else? Okay, everybody, we're gonna adjourn and pray that we don't miss school this week or in the future. Okay, adjourns will mark the 17th, 2015, at six o'clock at the county office. The motion, Mr. Smith? Wake up, guys. Mr. Curry, that's an all yes vote?
Yeah.
All yes.